Six oh nine, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with endearing justice for all.
At this time, oh, we'll do a roll call. Please note that Commissioner Maloney is excused. And we'll move right into election of chairman. I'll take the motion.
Chairman, I'm sorry, point of order. Could we get a motion to officially excuse Commissioner Maloney?
Yes, we can.
A move that we excuse Chairman Maloney.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kish, second by Commissioner Barnes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. You want to do, Katie, you want to do the chairman position first and then vice chair?
Thank you, Chairman, yes. We need a motion for a new nominations and then motions for a new chairman and if necessary, we will need it for a vice chairman, too.
Okay, I will entertain a motion for chairman.
I nominate Commissioner Bray as new chair.
A second.
It has been moved and by Commissioner Kish and seconded by Commissioner Barnes that Mr. Commissioner Bray becomes the chairman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries.
So we will need a vice, yes, congratulations Chairman Bray. So we now have a vice chairman vacancy and so we would like to hear nominations and a motion on a vice chairman.
I'll open the floor for a nomination on vice chair.
I nominate Commissioner Barnes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kish and seconded by Commissioner Walters that Commissioner Barnes becomes a vice chair. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, congratulations.
I thank.
We'll move on to agenda item 5.1, the approval of the PNZ Commission meeting on April 20th, 2016.
I move to approve the minutes from last month's meeting.
A second.
Been moved by Commissioner Barnes, seconded by Commissioner Kish. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries. Citizen comments, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on any non-agenda items. Are there any speaker cards? None? All right, ex parte communication, this is the opportunity for any commissioners. None? There is no old business. I will open the public hearing on the Lucero planned area amendment in Australia community and this will be presented by Alex.
Thank you Chairman, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission. The PAD amendment before you this evening was made by Newland Communities. It amends the Calisto PAD amendment that was approved in March of 2013. Prior to that, it, the Calisto PAD amendment was amending the Australia Phase 1 PAD. So this is the second amendment. Newland has utilized the existing amendment to make the proposal under the new subdivision name Lucero. The PAD document provided to you highlights and redlines the proposed changes, so it's very transparent of what the requests are. And I just pulled a few, or the pages that are changed from the amendment for this presentation, but I do have the full document if anyone would like to refer to it. As noted on page six, the request is to refine the land use plan and table, add to the development standards with, which includes additional lot sizes and introduces a commercial zoning for a future welcome center. So the first minor change is to the Village Drive. The, excuse me, the Village Drive is conceptual, it has not been approved. They're just showing what they propose when it does come around with the preliminary plat- phases. The boxed area at the top of the page is where the commercial zoning will happen, where the proposed welcome center site is going to be located. Cool, okay, this is the existing lot strategy versus the conceptual lot strategy that's being proposed for approval. The new request shown in the box does show those standards that I, those requests that I included at the beginning of the presentation that they had on page six. You can see the numbers changed and the lot count has not been amended at all, it does remain at 1250. The new cluster plan shows where the variation, or the deviation from the existing cluster plan is. As you can see, the red lines show where the new lot sizes have been implemented or planned out to, for future changes. And then the land use area and table shows the density of those lots. Those did vary, or differ from the existing approved plan, but it's still consistent. The, they did add in there the stipulations of approval for the Calisto PAD. It was modified to reflect the Lucero name and since they are included as stipular, as standards within the PAD, they have not been repeated in the stipulations of approval except for the first three have been, have been included as stipulations, just to reiterate the fact and keep it to standard. Stipulation 20 was amended, was struck, striked through and amended to allow for some depressions in the neighborhood greens to allow some stormwater runoff. This was okayed by engineering, just, we did have that stipulation in there to maintain a more usable site of the neighborhood greens. And as you look through the PAD, they do maintain several uses of the neighborhood greens. And then they did add the 47 by 90 lots as the exception to the two-story homes stipulation. This is similar to something you'd see in Verrato where there's the smaller lots with larger floor plans, just to have a more variety. And then they did include the one-way streets line in there just to also add for a variety and to break up that Village Drive concept for some flexibility. The, a lot of the design standards that were written in as stipulations have been included into the design criteria, just for consistency, when whoever's reviewing the plans in the future can straight reference these design standards rather than having to look back at the stipulations. The, this page does show those, like I said, those design stand, or some of them are stipulations, some of them are added standards to make it really clear. And these, this page is the new lot sizes, the 47 by 90s are those two-story homes, lot, lot areas. And then they added some more, some more sizes just for variety because a lot of home builders have been looking for different lot sizes and just so they can go with the market. And then the neighborhood commercial is going to be zone C1. It is planned for the Welcome Center that's located right behind the Star Tower. The Welcome Center ideally will have a coffee shop, a hike and bike shop and be a large trailhead for the rest of the Lucero neighborhood. There's a lot planned out there like the amphitheater and just neighborhood events for newcomers, for existing residents, for anyone to use as an open space area. And the rest of it does just include those standards like I mentioned. There's not very many, there isn't any changes to those standards, they've just been added to the pages within the PAD. And then the garage placement, one of the lines was striked through with the garages, that garage dominance cannot take place. They have added the garage placement design requirements and those, we do, we will require as they develop just to eliminate the garage dominance on the streets. So with that, it wraps up my presentation. Pete Tyke and Jeff Denzack is here and they are available for any questions and also I believe they'd like to make a request to the PAD as well.
Any questions for staff?
Actually, yes, if you don't mind.
Commissioner Walters?
Thank you, could you go back to your slide or your page 35? Yes ma'am, and looking at this, you said that in comparing the 2013 approved cluster plan to the 2016 cluster plan, you said it's different but still consistent. Could you drill down on that and explain what you mean by that?
Thank you Chairman, Commissioner Walters. The, let me zoom in a little bit. The numbers do differ, they all are within the range of low to low medium density. As a whole, it's, it's pretty consistent since it is clustered, it is clustered plans, there are a lot of open space areas, so, which is why the numbers aren't too different. I didn't make myself very clear and I apologize for that. So it is, if you look in, so it does increase one to two den, average gross density per parcel. But it would remain consistent with that low, low medium density in the residential areas.
Alex, may I jump in for a minute? Can you zoom back out? Just to provide some additional clarification, you can see this approved cluster plan that's in the middle and on the right. You know, often with PEDs, what we'll see is a proposed development plan which shows specific densities and exactly where they're going to go. The concept with the Lucero is that the different product types they're proposing can be put on these different parcels. They're showing us an example of what the land use could, layout could be, but they do have the ability to change some of those lot types and land uses around. And so you can see there were some changes on, you know, some of the PED parcel, like six went from low medium density to low density and that's just because they're changing around some of the concepts, they're refining it as they're doing their planning, but it's still consistent with the P, what the PED allows. It permits them to do that. And so this could even change a little bit more. They have been in for pre-application meetings with staff on preliminary plats for several of these areas, so they have really been refining the planning in a lot of these parcels, but they do have the flexibility to change them around a little bit.
Any further questions for staff? Would the applicant like to address the commission? Thank you Alex, thank you Katie.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner, my name is Pete Tyke, I work with the Newland Communities and we are in here requesting this PAD amendment. One of the main issues we've seen, just in the short period it was approved, is that the market is ever-changing and so just when we think we have it dialed in, we find out we don't. And, and so what we do is we work with our planners and in this particular case, to expand on this, what we're finding, when Alex had mentioned the 47 by 90 foot lot, that's become actually a very desirable lot in this market these days. And, and so that's why we're making some of these changes. You'll notice also up in the 1B area, or I'm sorry, 1A area, used to be some larger lots that, that we just, we just brought them down to a 70 foot by 130 just because what we're finding is that area was a, a larger so semi-custom lot that, that we have not sold one and, and I can't remember when. So what we're also finding there is that there's a very, very limited market right now for those, so we're making those changes at this point. Beyond that, if there's any questions I can answer.
Any questions for the applicant?
I do. Just so to clarify, so what you're seeing in the market is people are looking for smaller lots and that's why we're changing the densities, is that correct?
Correct. And the other thing you have to keep in mind with this PAD is we've not only got this area to consider, but we've got the rest of our, say, 10,000 north acres above Pecos Road. So one of the challenges we always have is we can't take something like this and plan it to, to have every type of density or available when we have Montecito still we need to consider. So what we need to do is be very careful in this type of planning to make sure it doesn't become so dominant that we put our own property further south out of business. But yes, to your point, we are seeing a much greater demand in those smaller lots. One of the things if I could clarify for you is Alex had mentioned on those, one stipulation where the, the Village Greens were going to be retaining water, what they're going to retain is their own water inside the curb. So it, it's just basically if rain falls and your back of curb, it's just retaining that water only.
Back in 2013 or 1986 even, what was their reasoning to have that stipulation to be that there will not be runoff? I'm just confused at where would the water go if there's not going to be runoff or stormwater going to these greens?
Well, the reason that we put that in there is the original step, one of the steps was the Village Greens, those could not be used as retentions.
Right.
So, or in other words, what we would do is put in a scupper or drainage to them and then use them as retention to hold water to leach in. So all we did was clarify that, that we're not going to be running water to those areas, but in the same token, we're not going to try and get the rainwater out of there, we're just going to let it.
And go into the ground. Thank you. That was, I just didn't understand the reasoning behind the, the language prior. And I do have a second question in regards to the garages. I noticed that prior to, they said that there will be no garage dominant streets and it was very clear in that language. So I was just trying to figure out what the purpose of that language was and now we seem to be changing that to, we're okay with garage dominant or garage is facing the road, is that what we're meaning here?
Well, I, I believe what we're doing is clarifying more than anything. The, we haven't necessarily changed the plan.
Okay.
It, what we're trying to do is make sure that we have a better understanding of what we're proposing. What I will do is Jeff Denzick with Swaback, we work pretty closely with him and, and they do a lot of the research for us, so what I will do is let him go into a little bit more depth on that, but we spent quite a bit of time just coming up with the concepts to come back into planning to make sure that they had a complete understanding before we got some approval and then all of a sudden confusion's created then and then we're all way too late, so.
Mr. Denzick, if you'd just say your name and your address for the record, please.
Sure. Jeff Denzack, Swaback Partners, 7550 East McDonald Drive, Scottsdale, Arizona. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commission members. So just to give a quick little background of Swaback Partners, we do architecture and planning throughout the Southwest. We've talked a little bit about Verrato, we did all the master planning, the design guidelines and the entitlements for Verrato and many other communities related to the issue of the little neighborhood greens and detention. Sometimes what you see in subdivisions on plan, what might look like a neat little park, but when you actually see it, it's 10 feet deep and it's really just simply designed for detention and not designed to think about how people could use the space. So in this case, we and Newland and staff have worked very hard to kind of put in place the tools to make sure that these are going to be attractive, usable pieces of open space that not only can people enjoy, they're going to help with real estate value. So that's an important component. In terms of the garage dominance, one of the things that we talked about when we went through the next go-around is rather than just kind of simply say it's not going to have garage dominance, what we've done in this go-around is added much more detail in terms of what are the key elements and components that will help us combat garage dominance. So you can see without, within the document, we've got lots of different examples and, and again, that's super important because, as you know, this document not only helps from the planning standpoint, but it's going to actually help in terms of the, the kind of construction and the aspirations and expectations of what the physical built environment will do. So as we start to coordinate with potential builder partners, the starting point are going to be these guidelines and additional builder guidelines that we're working on. So we've talked a little bit about the, the kind of overall plan and when we think about places like Verrato, we refer to Verrato as TND, a traditional neighborhood development where it's more organized on a grid pattern with, with shorter blocks and lots of focal views and, and kind of strategic incorporation of open space, which is all great. In this case, this land, because it has just some beautiful undulations and landforms, what, what we did here was looked at formulating a plan that was based on clusters. So, so rather than widespread development, you strategically cluster the development to be more sensitive. So in a way, when we're kind of inside some of these neighborhoods, they'll actually look and feel like some of the character of Verrato, but done and planned in a different way. One of the other components that we talk about in the document is Signature Streets. And Signature Streets is a program that we promote within our practice and Newland has embraced and it's represented in Verrato and again, we've had lots of discussions and meetings with staff, is the reality, as you all know, in the, in the kind of aspirations that we have, we're always balancing what we would love to see versus the reality of how a builder will execute and build something out, okay? So it's a balancing act and what we do is we have this program Signature Street where we've put in place within these guidelines, the kind of toolkit which was going to establish the parameters for a builder to make sure he can do his work, but it's within kind of the, the expectations that we want. And literally the term Signature Street is from our experience where we have lots of people, you know, when you talk about where their house is maybe as you're driving down a street, they'll say, well, my house is just past the transformer on the right. Literally, right? So, so it's, it's kind of neighborhoods that are just, you know, same and suburban sprawl. So the idea of Signature Streets and what we're trying to do here is really create a program that as you drive through these different neighborhoods, they'll have different character and feel and, and an identity that, that homeowners can be proud of. So again, the, the guidelines and the whole framework have lots and lots of components that are going to help ensure that process. One thing that Alex mentioned and we wanted to talk about in a little detail that has come up is as we're looking at the engineering, we have one little detail that came up that I want to share with you related to standards and I'm going to use your Elmo here. Within our base standards for our lots, and for example, here you can see we've got the 47 by 90s and the 52 by 120s and, and even our 60 by 120s, the baseline that we established for the lots was from our right-of-way, which is here, and our property line, we identified a 10-foot minimum side setback at the side street side. So the interior setback is six and six, as you can see here, but always on that street side, we had a 10-foot side setback, okay, as a baseline. And as you know, as part of the development of all the neighborhoods within Lucero is rather than have that typical suburban model where we have lots backing up the lots to a common wall, for 99.9% of the lots, we actually have a, that natural buffer zone. Now, between us, the developers not just doing that out of the kindness of their heart, they think that creates value, but certainly from the experience and the quality of the living environment, we think it's a win-win. And again, we do it on a lot of our communities. One of the nuances of that is from an engineering standpoint, in working with engineers, we found is that oftentimes they need to have a landscape tract associated with that, right in the location of that side street condition, okay? So what our engineers have proposed to us is that at our property line, they, they have at a minimum proposed a 10-foot tract in many cases, okay? And what we're finding is, is if we have a 10-foot tract and then a property line, that additional 10 feet of setback that we require here becomes a hindrance in terms of the lot size, okay? So what, what we've suggested is that where we have a 10-foot tract identified, we'd like to request that we still can use that 6-foot setback from the interior. So what that would mean is the total setback would still be 16 feet, therefore 6 feet greater than our minimum standard defined here. So from an engineering standpoint, it's helping our engineers deal with technical issues and from our standpoint, from a design standpoint, we think it's a win-win because in those cases, we would have a 16-foot setback rather than a 10-foot setback. So we wanted to just take a minute to clarify that for you all.
So Mr. Denzick, then, I think based on what you've explained here, I don't think that there needs to be a further amendment, does there? Or do you feel that there needs to be?
I would leave that to staff to help me answer that question.
Thank you Chairman, Commissioners. It is requested by staff that on page 54, where they have the design or the development standards for the lot sizes, that a number 17 be added with the language. When a side yard tract with a minimum width of 10, 10 feet is incorporated between a side, the side of a lot and adjacent street right-of-way, the minimum internal side yard setback can be used between the home and side yard property line.
That was page 52?
This is on page 54.
That's the recommendation by the staff?
Yes, we believe that would be appropriate for, to allow them to make their requests and it would continue on without changing any of the stipulations, just the PAD itself. And that would be recommended if, if you decide to recommend it to council.
And does the applicant feel that meets your needs?
Yes, it does.
Any other questions for the applicant or staff? Before we move into the motion, I will just clarify as I do and mostly for Commissioner Walters. I do hold an agricultural lease with Newland Communities. This particular project does not impact my dealings with them whatsoever, so as long as you're good with it, I will vote on that. I will entertain a motion for this item.
I move that we add stipulation 17, which would allow for an extra 6 feet of setback used when there is a 10-foot buffer zone. Did I say that correctly? I was trying to keep it all in my head.
I think you want to move the case number and amend it to in- I think you want to move the case number and amend it to include the language that was provided by staff.
Yeah, and if I can interject, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kish, if, maybe you can provide that language so he can include it in his motion.
It was a little long.
Yeah. Just to make sure we're all on the same page.
I was doing my best from memory.
You did great. Thank you for your effort.
Commissioner Kish, if you can restate your motion indicating moving the case number forward and then the amendment that staff and the applicant has agreed to, please.
I move that we move to allow and pass item numbers 162100002 with amended stipulation number 17, that when a side yard tract with a minimum width of 10 feet is incorporated between the side of a lot and adjacent right-of-way, the minimum internal yard setback can be used between the home and side yard property line.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kish with the amendment seconded by Commissioner Walters. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Staff communication.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, Chairman. Appreciate your time and dedication tonight, first thing. I'd just like to re-up you on the actions that the council has taken recently, as we normally do every meeting. So, the rezoning for Saraville East, if you remember that, had to do with automotive-related uses in an overlay district and so forth, and PAD amendment that was recently passed by the city council. The Canyon Trails PAD amendment for La Ventia Phase III, and the preliminary plat for the same project was recently approved by the council as well. And the adoption of the El Rio Design Guidelines will be coming before the city council on this coming Monday, the 23rd, for their consideration and endorsement. So that's the action that the city council has taken. And we did add some training for you all tonight, so if you all indulge me, I'm going to kind of lead it, and Katie will tag team with me tonight. And first, before I get started with that, I'd just like to say thank you to Alex for her hard work on Lucero and working with Newland. She has worked so diligently on this. It's a very large project, very impactful and meaningful for the city, and she has worked so hard, I just, tonight, we just want to call her an honorary planner three.
Congratulations.
Okay, so.
Christopher, I'm sorry, can I interject really quick with just another general staff communication before you get to the training? I just wanted to update the commission that we met with the subcommittee, the council subcommittee to appoint commissioners, and they reviewed the applications we had on file for planning commission. They are moving forward with recommending the appointment of one additional commissioner now. Her name is Janet Keys. She has indicated that she is interested in taking the position, so council will consider that at their June 13th meeting. So we're hoping that she will be appointed then and can join us for our June 15th commission meeting. It was very last minute, we did invite her here tonight to be an honorary member, but she, we didn't hear back from her, so she didn't get back to us. The additional position, they are going to hold interviews for, so they probably won't be able to start till the June or August meeting. So, we don't have the second vacancy filled yet, so we'll keep you updated as we hear about that.
So then, was Mrs. Keys, then she was, she went through the original process?
Yes, when Commissioner Walters was appointed, she was interviewed during that time, and they loved her, and so they were happy to offer her the position when the vacancy opened up and she was still available and interested. So it's nice, we're able to hopefully fill a vacancy very quickly, and then we're going to go through the interview process for the remaining vacancy.
Thank you, Katie.
So, with that, we'll just kind of jump in, and I would also just like to say that the new commissioner, Ms. Keys and Commissioner Maloney, will also, will get them together to go through the training as well. So just because they're not here doesn't mean they're getting away with anything that you all are. So if y'all bear with me and feel free, we're going to, I'd like to try and keep this as informal as possible, considering it is a formal planning commission meeting, but nevertheless, if you have any questions or I'm not making sense, please let me know. So, first of all, just to kind of orient you, because each one of you has a different tenure on the commission, and some of this may be a little bit repetitive to those of you that have been here a while, and some is going to be brand-new information. So, obviously, DSD Development Services Department works very closely with you all and also with the council, and we're kind of broken up into, as it relates to planning commission functions, into an administrative side, which is myself and Bobby Fulbright and Heather. And then on the planning and zoning, the actual case review, meeting with applicants and owners and answering questions from you all, as well as the gang, as I'll refer to them as, Katie, Joe, Karen, and Alex. So they work in the day-to-day activities of, on projects and working with applicants and initiatives as well. So planning is fundamentally based on a model that was circulated by the U.S. Department of Commerce, I believe, in the 1920s, and we're not going, we're not starting in the 1920s, so you can just kind of relax.
I'm a history teacher, this is interesting.
But the model was circulated by the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Department, I believe, in the 1920s. So there's a lot of similarities between planning legislation, enabling legislation, adopted by the states around the country. In Arizona, the enabling legislation is the ARS, which is Arizona Revised Statutes, 9-461 for those of you that are really interested in it. But essentially, what it does is it sets up a framework that empowers local governments to establish a planning program or a planning and planning zoning commission if they so choose. It's not required, but if they so choose. And if they do so, then the planning commission is involved in things such as the general plan, which you all heard the update from Alex recently, zoning, board of adjustments, which acts as a judicial relief valve, if you will, subdivisions, so subdivision plats, as you well know, come before you, and then also development fees. It sets that up, that's what applicants pay when they come to pull building permits, impact fees, if you will, for streets, parks, public safety and so forth. Although you all aren't necessarily involved in that, it is part of the planning program because those capital costs of providing new services is then paid by those generating that need, so it goes to help offset that expense. You know, just some general terminology, when we talk about planning, structure is more or less who is doing what? The general plan sets the vision, what does the city of Goodyear want to become in 20 years? I think the general plan that was recently ratified was about a year and a half ago, Katie, two years? Not quite two years, a year and a half ago? You know, does an outstanding job of casting that vision, and it's really a forward-looking document. Then there's regulatory planning, which is things such as zoning and subdivision regulations, those kind of allowance programs or programs, if you will. And then planning initiatives, which could be things such as landscaping, sidewalks, bikes and trails type of improvements. Those are what we refer to as planning initiatives. You'll hear generally throughout the country, very similar toolboxes used by most communities. There's a comprehensive plan or general plan, we'll use those words interchangeably. There's a zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. That's just the normal type of documents that most cities utilize. In Arizona, it does, state law does say, if you do establish a planning program or planning commission, that the agency that helps with that develops and maintains the general plan. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that you all have to do it, but that you're involved in it. Staff does it, or consultants can do it. Review the capital improvements plan, that's what a CIP is. And then, and you also have other powers to fulfill missions, such that if we need, you all could enter into a contract, if you will, with service providers to provide certain planning studies if you needed to. You have that ability. Obviously, you have to also be approved by council because they can control the money. You all don't have a budget, per se, to spend, but nevertheless, you have that ability to enter into contracts to execute your duties. So just generally, what is a general plan? Like I said previously, it's long-range, provides physical development goals and objectives, must include, or really should include, I don't want to say must, but an implementation strategy, which ours does. And it's really a very widely-used document. Being on the private sector, I can tell you that people looking to make investments in a community oftentimes use a general plan or a comprehensive plan as a litmus test on where to make investments. So it can be a very powerful tool from that standpoint. It's a way to engage your citizenry as well, and simply ask questions, what's important to you as citizens? Get their feedback, and then the city's policies and directives change to match the input that the public gives us. Another, as I mentioned earlier, very conventional tool in the toolbox is the zoning ordinance. Zoning ordinance needs to have both the map, which you can see on the web and also in our office, and the text. So you have to have both. Can't have one without the other, it's like chicken and egg type thing. And so the form and format of the zoning ordinances across jurisdictions can change, but generally, and I won't list all of those here, but generally, they all include special districts, parking requirements, some ordinances have tree and landscape in the zoning ordinance, some jurisdictions have it outside of, same thing with sign regulations. That can be included in the zoning ordinance, or in some cities, it's a standalone ordinance, it just depends, it's local preference. But typically, the zoning ordinances all have district definitions and permitted uses that are allowed in each one of those districts. The zoning ordinance also must preserve due process and set out the appropriate procedures that applicants who wish to change their zoning district and also afford the citizenry or the impacted property owners, potentially impacted property owners, the process by which to become involved and have their voice heard. So it's really important that those processes are very clearly established. Here at the city of Goodyear, we have those processes very clearly established in our administrative process manual, which does go hand-in-hand with our zoning ordinance. Typically, well, actually, not typically, all zoning ordinances have definition section, definitions at the initial can be, you're like, oh, my gosh, you mean we have to define a house? Or define how many families can live in a house before it's multifamily or two-family? So you kind of get into the minutia, if you will, with definitions, but I can tell you that it can end up being very, very important in the administration and regulatory and also potentially in code enforcement. Those definitions can be very, very important. It used to be that definitions were real wordy, you know, and they have a whole lot of words, but there's been a trend in the last, I don't know, 10, 15 years or so, to really try and limit the words and use pictures, especially like sign ordinances and things of that nature. Instead of trying to define a wall sign, which you could write a paragraph about what a wall sign is, just have a couple of pictures, and you know, this is the intent of what a wall sign is. That's kind of a popular trend as well. As I mentioned earlier, zoning ordinance must have zoning districts, and so there's no rhyme, excuse me, no rhyme or reason to zoning districts necessarily, it's all local choice and local preference. So a C1 or C2 in Goodyear can be totally different than C1 or C2 in, pick a city, Chandler or Gilbert. Just because they have the same designation doesn't mean they're the same. So it's all local decisions. Some jurisdictions, because we just did this research on another matter, have a lot of residential districts. In Goodyear, we have primarily three residential districts, but some jurisdictions have 10, 15 residential districts. It's not bad, not good necessarily, but not bad necessarily, it's just how they chose to write their regulations. So the point of all that is there's a lot of local preference and a lot of local decision-making that goes into districts and things of that nature. Strategies for zoning districts can be form-based, which means that you're not necessarily so concerned about the use of a building as you are how the structure relates to its adjoining structures in the street. So whether it's a coffee shop or a computer repair place, you don't really necessarily get into the absolute minutia of that, it really has to do more about standards of the building. TND, and you heard that come up a little bit earlier in your presentation, traditional neighborhood development is also another strategy that can be included in zoning ordinances or transit-oriented development. I know Phoenix has worked a lot on that over the years. And then there's the conventional or very time-tested, if you will, Euclidean or pyramidal zoning ordinance, which is pretty much what ours is. So if you think of a pyramid, you have a lot of things allowed on the bottom, and then as you kind of go up in the intensity of the resident or the districts, rather, the number of uses that are allowed in each one of those gets smaller and smaller. So that's what that kind of refers to. Very popular. Pros and cons with each one of these different strategies, but there are different ways of skinning the cat, so to speak. Permitted uses under each one of those zoning districts need to spell out what kind of uses are or are not allowed. And again, back in the day, we used to spend, I remember I was in graduate school, we spent, did half a class on permitted uses, and I mean, some of my classmates wrote a document as like a phone book, trying to list all the uses. Frankly, we're not smart enough in this era of evolution, if you will, to anticipate. I mean, who would have thought, you know, 20 years ago about indoor trampoline park? I don't know, maybe somebody did, but it's not listed in a lot of documents, so we have to kind of have some flexibility in order to see what's it analogous to, for example. So a lot of ordinances are migrating away from this exhaustive phone book list of uses to uses-like or uses-similar or uses-comparable-to. So, I mean, functionally, what's the difference between a doctor's office and a dentist office? So, you know, why do we have to discard a lawyer's office, for example? Anyway, so it's interesting. It's a different way of doing that. Signage is a big topic, especially nowadays with the Supreme Court case that was decided back in the summer, Reed versus Gilbert. And so we are actually working on the revisions to the sign ordinance as we speak, that's one of Steve Creche's projects. Sign ordinances, jurisdictions are certainly allowed to regulate height and bulk and materials and locations and things, brightness of signs, that's totally fair play. The speech of a sign, meaning what's on it, is very closely guarded, certainly First Amendment right. And that was one of the things that came out of the Supreme Court case, is that sign regulations essentially need to be content neutral. So no longer will we be able to regulate signs based on real estate signs versus commercial signs like for McDonald's, because you have to read the sign to know it's a real estate sign or read the sign to know it's for a commercial purpose. So we have to change our strategy at sign regulations. So Steve is actually working on that, and that will be coming to you all. Probably Katie? August, September-ish timeframe, early fall?
Ish.
Ish. So we are, we will be doing outreach with local commercial stakeholders and hosting the Business Roundtable and things of that nature. So it's interesting, but signs are frequently part of the zoning ordinance. Also, in zoning, if you have zoning, we obviously need to have some enforcement provisions, and so the document needs to set out penalties such as fines, process, how things like that get done. And it can either be in your zoning ordinance, or it can be a standalone sort of city ordinance. In Goodyear, we rely on our three code officers to essentially do zoning enforcement, and it's a good chunk of their time, 50 to 60, maybe 75% of their time is related on that. Not that we have a whole lot, but it can get very, you have to document and so on and so forth. So, some jurisdictions, the building inspector So some jurisdictions, the building inspectors are also zoning enforcement officers or it just depends by jurisdiction, but in Goodyear, we have three code officers. Subdivision regulations. So done with zoning for a minute. Zoning subdivision regulations is another very conventional tool. And it's to provide for the orderly division of properly to ensure that public health, safety, and welfare is provided for. And one thing that's really overlooked by a lot of jurisdictions is that subdivision regulations can be a very, very powerful civic design opportunity for a city because it impacts, can impact the form of a community. What I mean by that is if you have a very prescriptive subdivision ordinance that talks about where streets go or how do you allow cul-de-sacs or does all streets have to connect, that changes the form of the community and the form, in this case, will really impact function. Transportation routes, it'll certainly make an impact there as well. So it can be a very, very powerful tool to impact the form of a city. And when it gets to planning design, you know, parks, civic parks or community parks or regional parks can all be included as part of subdivision regulations. And one really important thing I'd like to point out for you is that when you subdivide property, there's residual space. And so is that space part of the design of the neighborhood and the community or is it just residual, just a byproduct? And so we can think about that in two ways. In Goodyear, we're really proactive in dealing with that residual space and having it as an enhancement to the community and to the city. And some jurisdictions, it's not so important. But it can be a very, very important thing. Planning, design, street widths, sidewalks, bike lanes, all those types of things, although they're engineering-related, fundamentally come back to some planning philosophy about what are we, how are we designing the community? Is it just for cars or is it for cars and people or just for people? So, you know, there's that balance. Subdivision regulations also have, as I just mentioned, have a direct relationship to engineering standards. Oftentimes, civil design is included as part of subdivision regulations. In Goodyear, we have a companion document called the Engineering Design Standards Manual, EDS PM, something like that. You know, they got to have a big acronym, right? But we just call it the Engineering Design Manual. And so it sets standards for things such as stormwater management, erosion control, street widths, roadway buildup, things of that nature. It also can set standards for fire hydrant placement, sidewalk standards, the width, the slopes, to make sure it's ADA compatible and have the ramp downs at the intersections and things of that nature. All those details are really important to the design and how the community actually gets built and functions in the future. Subdivision regulations kind of like, are very much like zoning ordinance, explains the process by which you can go about subdividing property. Different processes are applicable in different situations. If you're creating a large number of lots, you utilize a preliminary plat process. If you're doing a smaller, maybe a minor land division, for example, or if you're just moving a line between properties, there's a different process for that. So it can set out processes as well. Capital Improvement Plan, these are other tools, frequently used tools, transportation, streets plan, pedestrian plan, park and rec plan. Some communities use SMARTCODE, which kind of would be if you're utilizing a TND, Traditional Neighborhood Development process in your zoning ordinance, then you may want to have SMARTCODE as a companion document. But the point is, is that these are all frequently utilized tools. Goodyear is pretty much leading the pack in all these. We have a capital improvement plan, transportation plan, park and rec plan. So we're out in front in building a community that we can be proud of. Yes, sir?
Can you back up one?
Yep.
What's the SMARTCODE?
It's a companion document. It can be used, some communities use it as, it's like a transect-based zoning ordinance, so to speak, such that you have rural classification, you can have rural residential classifications, then you have suburban, you can have downtown, villages, things of that nature. It's a different, it's just a different document that can act just like a zoning ordinance, if that makes sense. Very much architecturally relies on a lot of architectural principles and can include, frequently does include the form-based code as well. So it works together with it.
So tonight, when they were talking about the SMART-Coded TND, Traditional Neighborhood Development.
Development.
They were trying to have a, it's almost like a nuance, like this is very specific, we're trying to do this particular thing here, so it doesn't fit here or here, it's more niche. Is that...
Yeah, that's correct. And typically, what happens is, yes, you're exactly correct. In a particular situation, on a particular development, they may create some zoning districts for it, maybe a PAD, but that could be based on TND principles and the SMARTCODE as well. Or some smaller communities that I'm aware of throughout the country have actually kind of thrown out their zoning, traditional zoning ordinance and just gone to SMARTCODE. It's kind of a big leap of faith, probably also, I don't know for sure, but I would think probably embraced in the Northwest as well. But it kind of worked, I've seen it work in smaller communities, haven't seen it on really large communities yet. But most large communities have TND districts or SMARTCODE, some sort of integration of that as a companion or in addition to, they're just regular Euclidean or pyramidal requirements as well, if that makes sense. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yeah, I've seen those before, but I didn't realize they were called SMARTCODEs.
Yeah, there's all different types.
Maybe there was some whole new thing that I didn't know about.
No, it's a marketing name.
Nonsense. Calthorpe.
Right, 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 right. So CIP plan is also in the regular conventional toolbox. What it's seeking to do, because a city, just like anybody else, has limited financial resources and a long list of wants and desires. So what it seeks to do essentially is marry the goals and aspirations of what the general plan would call for as far as public improvements and prioritize them and then fund them on a year after year basis, so that you're making progress and implementing the plan and making infrastructure plans or park, infrastructure improvements or park improvements or things of that nature. So it's just a way of helping to prioritize projects and also ensuring that you have appropriate budget capacity to pay for them.
Capital Improvement Plan, that's passed by council, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
When they do the budget?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
My request on that would be that, I know we don't get to see that, but maybe afterwards a report on it, because oftentimes, you know, when we're talking about projects, we say, well, when is, you know, my neck was, when is Saravell going to be?
Right.
You know, widened or so that we kind of know. I think that would be just good general knowledge for us to have what we're looking for, because I know I see Australia as being repaved or resurfaced or whatever, and I sure as heck would like to see Saravell get widened.
Sure, sure.
But just general knowledge, I think, would help the commission.
And of course, there's different programs. For example, there's a resurfacing program in the city, which may or may not fall under the CIP. But like rebuilding Van Buren to the west is, or reconstructing it, I don't want to say reconstruct, but widening it to the west is in the CIP, for example. So there, and then there's different portions of it. So one year in the, one fiscal year, you may pay for design or right-of-way acquisition or what have you, or design of a building, and then the following year, go to construction. So there's different ways to budget that resource. But certainly, your point's well taken and we can share that with you. Pedestrian plan, well, what is it? Well, it pretty much is what it sounds like. It's really, it can be a very interesting process to go through, because the really good ones anticipate what we call latent pedestrian demand, because the demand for walking between things such as neighborhoods and an industrial park is not as strong as it would be between neighborhoods and a school. But if you don't have any sidewalks and you're trying to figure out what to do, you can actually calculate the latent pedestrian demand between planned uses. That way, you can make, again, informed budgetary decisions on where sidewalks and bike lanes and things of that nature should go, based on the anticipated usage.
How do they figure that out? How many people live in one area versus how much traffic?
Number, so there's ITE, Institute of Transportation Engineers, has all these studies and documentations, documents about the amount of vehicle trips and pedestrian trips and bicycle trips based on different land uses. So you know, if you have a single-family residential development of so many units per acre that the pedestrian demand is blah, 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 whatever it is. And then if the higher density that gets, the more number of people that are there, the higher that demand goes up. But then it relates to, okay, well, where do they want to go and how far is it? So it's commercial here, maybe real high, but what type of commercial? Is it retail? Is it, you know, office or is it service? So there's all these nuances associated with it. So it can be a really neat, it's a very intriguing process to go through in order, because what it does is fundamentally is it says, okay, again, city, you have a limited amount of resources for sidewalk and transportation improvements, so where can you do that that benefits the most number of people?
Because Canyon Trails, where I live, has a lot of, is very mindful of how much people walk.
Right.
It's all trails, so it's just interesting. Just made that connection, so.
So any questions so far? I mean, get to ethics. And so the planning, let me start this section by stating that as planners, and I'll speak for DSD administration and also for the planning gang, if you will, Katie and her team, is that the process is really, really, really important. We can't violate the process. And what I mean by that is the integrity of the process is paramount to legitimacy of the planning program that the city does. If people believe in the process, it's going to, it'll have great results. If people don't have belief that the process is fair and transparent, then it's going to lead to problems. And our commitment is to have a very transparent, very planning process with a lot of integrity. Not saying that we never, not saying that we didn't before, that's not my point, but my point is, is that's why the process is so important to us. And when we say that we've given public notice and gone through these things, that's why we do that, because we want to ensure that the applicants and people who are affected have the opportunity to have their voices heard. And you all play a really important role in this, because you all are the ones that make the recommendation to the council. And so we want you all to be perceived absolutely as we are, as being, you know, absolutely transparent and a meaningful participant in the planning process, excuse me. So elected and appointed officials are subject to the ethics law, and really, the big deal is conflict of interest. Conflict of interest is frequently, are you receiving or immediate family member receiving any gain as a result of it, is really kind of what it boils down to. So if that situation does occur or comes up, you know, the simple thing to do is just raise your hand and you don't have to give a great big explanation. You say, I have a conflict of interest and walk down from the dais and go out of the room. And then after that, after that particular case is settled upon or the recommendation made, then we would simply just come get you and you'd come back out.
Similar to what Chairman Bray did tonight, is he just let us know that he works with this particular company. And is it just fine to say, is it cool that I stay here? I mean, I don't know if that's too informal.
No, 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 it's not.
I would remove myself if it was a change on the property that I'm actually leasing.
Right.
I see, okay.
Right.
That property doesn't affect anything. I don't gain anything, I don't...
Right. Or if it's a family member or anything that an immediate family member was, right?
Got it.
So what should you do? And we have the item on our regular standing agenda about ex parte communication, so don't have any private meetings or anything of that nature. You may very well be contacted by the applicant and/or concerned citizens, both maybe sometimes in favor and sometimes against. If that happens, certainly encourage them to put all, contact staff. You know, my suggestion to you would be remove yourself from that situation, have them contact us. We'll advise them of when the meeting is or if they want to give us a letter or an email or whatever the case is, or meet with them to ask, answer questions, we'll be happy to do so. We then, as you've heard in these other recommendations and other cases and so forth, when we get that information, we relay it to you. Again, being really mindful of the process. If we receive citizen feedback, we want you to have it as part of your deliberation. We want to make all decisions, obviously, in public forum and, you know, be independent and make your own decisions based on the information. So there's lots of different aspects that go into making decisions. There's information, opinions, legal requirements, input from the citizens. And then there are some other aspects, which is zoning is legislative, which I mean, what I mean by that is typically, courts do not second judge whether or not a case should or should not have been approved. What they'll look at is the procedural aspects, to make sure that due process was followed, the rights of all was considered, and similarly situated properties being treated the same way. So that's what I mean by legislative, that you all kind of get to make a decision, because it's a little bit different. In subdivisions, for example, you have a list of requirements that says streets have to be 28 feet, for example. Well, if they come in with a 27-foot street, okay, can't approve it unless you grant a waiver or a variance. If it's a 30-foot street, then really, but the neighbors want 32 feet, well, they've met the minimum requirement unless the applicant says, okay, I'll do 32. They've met the minimum, so you need, there's no basis to turn it down. That's the difference between those two. So in decision-making, obviously, you want to get the facts in our COACs or staff cover sheets, which come to you, have a lot of this information already in it for you, just giving you information about property sizes, giving you aerials, providing land use information, things of that nature. Sometimes you'll get surveys as part of us, well, with the subdivision, it's all based on a survey, but sometimes in a zoning case, you may get a survey with it as well in your documents. And then we'll provide you other information to help you make an informed decision, just kind of the facts of the case. Staff gives you a recommendation, which is essentially the professional opinion of whether or not it's meeting city requirements, if it's in the best interest of the city, is it in compliance with the general plan and other plans and objectives of the city. So what we, in our staff reports, you see that we render that opinion for you as well, just as we do to the city council. And then, you know, the other big part is, is has the applicant or application that's before you met all legal requirements, it's notice and citizen review meetings and things of that nature. We, you can rest assured that you're not going to have a case before you that has not had been properly noticed, because that would be, that's on us as staff to ensure that the public notice process is coming in. So, you know, at a contentious zoning meeting, and we'll have one in, I'm not saying next month, but, you know, we're going to have one at some point in time, right? That's just the nature of the business. You know, somebody may say, well, I didn't get notice. Well, you know, there's always a reason for that, or they may be outside of the notice area. You know, we all mail notice to 75,000 people every time on a zoning case. So there are requirements that we meet and we meet the requirements. So you can rest assured with that. Public hearings, you know, you're going to get public input, both pro and con. One thing I'd encourage you, and I haven't witnessed you all do this, which is a wonderful thing, because I've been at planning commission meetings where they actually get, take a side and argue one way or the other with the citizens. And so that really impugns the process, if you will, and kind of makes that, the integrity of the process a little bit questionable. So, you know, don't take sides. I know you all wouldn't do that. We always give written comments or include it in the case files, they're included in your packets, and they go to the city council as well. You know, an opening and documenting, the opening and closing of the public hearing. And of course, we absolutely want and encourage... And of course, we absolutely want and encourage public input because it's vital to have people's opinions and desires expressed. So what are our roles? As I indicated earlier, sort of the planning gang, if you will, they review and process applications, making sure that it meets city requirements or if not, documenting why and why not and things of that nature. They are giving notice and answering questions. And they are just working generally with the applicants through the approval process. We also do enforcement. I know Katie and the Code folks had a very great meeting yesterday talking about the barking dog ordinance. So, you know, and, you know, it's important, it's important stuff. Weeds, for example, signs, bandit signs, we get involved in all of those things. So it's a lot of fun and it provides a lot of opportunity for public interaction. So that's really what we do. We also work very closely with ECTEV, Economic Development, selling the city and its vision, meeting with clients and prospects that want to make an investment here and dealing with other residential builders, such as Newland, among others, and really helping to advance the city forward. So I went through a whole lot of information in a real brief timeframe. I didn't want to read every single word on the slides. I want your eyes to glaze over. But it's all there for you. And, you know, anytime you all have any questions about anything, whether it's an application that's in front of you or something you've heard on the street or from a friend and neighbor, you know, feel free to pick up the phone, we're always available. We want to be a resource for you and we appreciate your time that you dedicate to the city.
Any questions for Chris or staff?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
I got to say that we have a very, very professional staff. And I think you guys do a tremendous job in following the ethics portion, which is very important, and transparency. When you're not transparent, that can be a huge problem.
Absolutely.
And I do appreciate all the work that you guys put into that and having us prepared for meetings.
That's what we're here for, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other staff communication? With that, I will adjourn the meeting at 7:21.